In the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you please remain standing to observe a moment of silence for the victims of nine eleven. Thank you, as you were. So I'll call to order the September meeting of the Board of Trustees and we will begin by approving the minutes. A motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on August eighth, twenty twenty-three. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Kane, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on August eighth, twenty twenty-three. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corus, a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Get a motion?
I'll move it. I'll second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Corus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on September seventh, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. That brings us to the treasurer's report. Is treasurer?
Yep.
How you doing, Ken?
Good. How are you guys?
Good.
Um, the treasurer's report as of July twenty twenty-three. Uh, the revenues, we are at five point nine million. The village received about eight hundred thousand in taxes for July. The village received ninety thousand in paid parking revenue since May, of which four point five uh hundred, four one five uh yeah hundred is from Havens Beach. Uh, the charging stations, net revenue for the fiscal year is nineteen hundred. Uh, the justice court for the month of June took in fifty-nine thousand and the building department took in twenty thousand for July and the sewer took in twenty-five thousand for the month of July. Um, for expenditures, we pay Chesterfield nine hundred thousand. That's for the upgrade at the transient docks. Um, that was using the bond proceeds. Uh, the fire department upgraded their computer system, fourteen thousand, and then s- the sewer department had some pump-out services for fourteen thousand as well for July. And that's my report for July.
Any questions from the board?
No.
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 Motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. That brings us to our department committee reports and I will begin with the police department, fire department, and ambulance corps. Uh, the monthly report for the Sag Harbor Village Police Department includes, this is for August twenty twenty-three, the police department had nine hundred and twenty-two calls for service. We had five aggravated unlicensed, one suspended registration, one says OP violation, one criminal trespassing, one unlawful imprisonment, and two third, second, third assault. Assault in the third degree, excuse me. There were twenty-two motor vehicle accidents in the month of August. There were fourteen arrests, three DWI arrests, and a hundred and ten uniform traffic tickets were issued. That's the police report. As far as the Sag Harbor Fire Department goes, in the month of August, the fire department volunteered for two thousand two hundred and fifty-eight man-hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to sixty-eight calls for service. These calls included two motor vehicle accidents, four gas leaks, three carbon monoxide incidents, and a call to assist the police department with a child that was locked in a bathroom on a yacht. And a call to help for a search for a missing person that was in the Nyack area. Even though there were less calls for help this month than last, the members put in more hours with the annual, uh, excuse me, annual carnival that is held every year at Havens Beach. With great weather, people filled the fairgrounds every night. The biggest crowds were definitely on Friday night when we hosted one of the best firework displays in recent memory. This is a great community event and it gets rave reviews from young and old. So thank you to the fire department and thank you secondest, well, excuse me, first assistant chief now, Michael Guyer. That concludes the fire department report. We also had nine eleven ceremony yesterday. We had a good turnout in East Hampton at the windmill. So there were many fire departments there from the east end and police departments. Our ambulance corps was there. So there was good representation. Uh, so the, that brings me to the ambulance corps. We had a hundred and eight calls for service in the month of August, four work nights, one meeting, one training session, and five work details. We had ninety-nine calls for service in the month of August for twenty twenty-two. So we had tot- total man-hours of one thousand four hundred and ninety for the month of August. Uh, we took delivery of our new ambulance this month. Uh, the ambulance was bought with generous donations that we receive in our annual fund drive. It is then turned over to the village for emergency calls for the next ten years. So we add a new ambulance to our fleet. And that concludes my reports for the emergency services. Uh, now I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Hay for parks, justice court, planning, and the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My reports will be relatively brief. With the justice court, um, the number of violations that come through the justice court are, as we've talked about now in multiple meetings, down from prior years, but consistent with last year. Will be at the same level of revenues I expect by the end of this year that we were last year. Um, a little bit of that looks like the new normal. Part of that, as we know, is due to the lesser amount of traffic control officers we had throughout the summer, and that's been a problem for the entire East End, but certainly for us um, in terms of the amount of violations that were written. I want to say, though, despite that, you know, this was a very busy summer, as the mayor's reported all, all year long. And we were shorthanded for much of the summer, and I think the police and the TCOs did a fantastic job of trying to maintain order in the streets and flow in the streets of Sag Harbor. I'll turn to the parks report. Um, we've had a number of meetings um with various organizations, and let me start with Mash Park, actually. Mash Park had a very successful five K on Sunday. It's their major fundraising event. Um, once again, I want to thank the fire department and the police department for helping to control traffic and really organizing traffic flow throughout the village um run. I mean, that run went through the heart of Sag Harbor Village for two to three hours on Sunday morning. Um, and there were volunteer firefighters across all the checkpoints, the turnpoints, to make sure traffic flow is appropriate, as well as police officers and TCOs at every traffic point everywhere. So, you know, again, with an understaffed force, just want to give kudos to them all um, and the police force and the volunteer firefighters for helping um, what was really a very successful, I think, that event. There, I think, about three hundred participants in the event this year. Um, so it was a great event, um, but it couldn't happen without the voluntary cooperation of so many people throughout the village. Uh, on the parks, we're looking at a number of, um, but let me, let me leave it at that for the parks, and I'll turn to planning. We are working um as a board um with our local representatives and state government, as well as each other, to work on long-term planning solutions for the village that will help fund the long-term capital needs of the village. We're still in early preliminary stages of that work, and I'm hopeful in the next board meeting, if not, then the meeting after that, we can let sketch out a proposal of where we're heading with this, because we do have some long-term capital needs of the village. And um, there are multiple ways, there are multiple things we're looking to fund as priority projects that we'll want to bring to the, the public. Uh, and there, even with grant funding that is available, oftentimes that grant funding is reimbursement funding, so we have to fund those costs upfront and get reimbursement for them in the village, and we're talk, we're looking at millions and millions of dollars potential capital program, capital projects over the next year, two, three, four for the village. Um, so we've been working hard as a board and with community members as well, as well as with our local state assemblies to help us think through options to support the long-term planning needs of the village. Um, more to come on that in the next two to three month board meetings.
I just want to say that, you know, Representative Deal has helped us out tremendously. We met with him and he referred us to other members of the state legislation who have been helpful in guiding us through this process. So thank you to Representative Deal on that.
I think that's, that's enough for my reports.
Okay, that brings us to trustee Corus for the sewer department, village grants, zoning, board of appeals.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, for the sewage treatment plan for the month of August this year, a total gallons, uh, was three point one seven seven million gallons we received, and we pumped out fifty-five thousand gallons of sludge up island for further treatment. Um, all the DMR reports were forwarded on eight twenty-five. Suffolk County DHS inspection, the next inspection is going to be ten sixteen. Um, New York State DC inspection date is open. We never know when they're going to arrive. We had no complaints for the, the um, month of August. Um, the summary of operations, plant is running well, under all permitted levels, and we're operating at four of the five basins that we have available. Uh, B Benson contracting was out to fix a small pump, uh, prob- pump problem in one of the dry wells, and the flow increase from July to August was approximately eighty-eight thousand gallons. So that's just basically the uh, the amount of business being conducted on Main Street and the, in, in the bars and restaurants. So with that was, that picked up from July into August to tune of eighty-eight thousand gallons. Moving on to grants, um, since we last met, uh, we had a meeting um with East Hampton with um, Mr. Ben Skoye, the uh, uh, head of council there, and there's an eight hundred thousand dollar um grant application we have in, so we discussed that and how the village might try and secure that for Area K. If we were successful, we would be fully funded for Area K, so we could go ahead with the uh implementation of the searing of those forty homes, which would be fantastic, but we have to wait and see. Um, in addition, uh, we met with the town of Southampton Board and made a presentation, um, and that was in the last month, and that was eight hundred ninety-five thousand um, to, for area area, sorry, area, uh, the first eight hundred thousand was Area I, not K, the East Hampton side. Beg your pardon. So Southampton, eight hundred ninety-five thousand was Area K. That would be fully funded, and there's a further one point five million grant application to uh Southampton for Area I engineering, and that would extend the uh, the project south down Main Street, and we would include another two hundred homes. So hopefully, um, if these grants come through, we can really start making some real progress on this project. That's been ongoing now for about four years. Um, as was mentioned earlier, um, paid parking to date has brought in ninety thousand dollars to the village from um, between Long Wharf and Havens Beach. Havens Beach is responsible for about four thousand five hundred of that. Um, this program will continue until Thanksgiving, and we expect another twenty to thirty thousand dollars, which will give us, you know, between maybe a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars um, to use for transportation issues in the village, and maybe we can fix more pavements, and we'll obviously all discuss that together before we make a decision. And that concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Corus. Trustee Plum for Public Works Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, excuse me, three new catch basins were installed in Redwood and one more installed on Franklin Avenue. This was money allocated from the Long Wharf Parking Fund. The Antigua's Barbuda event was held at Marine Park where it went well, no problems to report. The highway department continues to paint antique lampposts now on Bay Street. Main Street has been completed. Patching of all roads continues where needed. Street sweepers continue to sweep all roads where needed. Painting of all stop lines continues around the village. Watering of flower baskets will continue all summer long, and garbage throughout the village is being picked up twice daily. We will be able to scale back a little after Labor Day. And uh, Tom put me on his project to try to rehab the, the old clock. It used to, it was here for decades. Uh, on village hall, and I'm glad to report that the mechanism for the clock is still made.
It is. Wow.
Making progress, and uh, we have to figure out a, a combing and a uh, sort of a blister, if you want to call it, or they sell for it, but uh, we're working on it.
It's like, it's like Back to the Future, save the clock, save the clock. We should do flyers and do a fundraiser maybe or something.
Anyway, that's my report.
I'm looking forward to that, because I, that's something that's part of the village, right? We go down Main Street, every once in a while, what time is it? You look up and look up, and there's nothing there. I'm like, come on, you gotta do better than that. So trustee Plum is working on that.
On the case.
Yes. So that takes us to, thank you, by the way. So that takes us to trustee Kane for the building department, Harbers and Docks, and the harbor committee. But before I get to you, I just want to mention, this, this goes along with uh, Bob with Public Works. We, I, we have a meeting tomorrow, Kate, correct? With the street lighting group. That's, we're going to be putting in new streetlights throughout the village. I, I believe I should get a better time when they're going to start. They said sometime in October, but I'll get more information at that meeting.
It's great.
Just to let you know, Bob, it's coming. Okay, trustee Kane.
Okay, and so to bring everyone up to speed with where we are in the building department, we um, are running just slightly behind last year's pace. We're about ninety-one percent of last year's pace, um, but right now we're running at uh, five hundred and nine thousand versus a, a total last year of eight hundred and seventy-five. So we, we think we're going to catch up a little bit more. And when, you know, when you think about the impact of the higher rates and many people who had put, who applied for permits to do work, they are just taking their time to get that work done. So um, that's impacting the revenue a bit, but having said that, um, the building department is still extremely busy. Fifty-three inspections were done, twenty-five notices of violations, which I know some people wonder, does code enforcement really do things, and they are actually very busy. So I just wanted to, to share those numbers with everyone. Um, and then as I flip to the harbor and docks area, as you see all the activity on the water in the month of August, you, everyone knows how um much activity there was out there, and they really did a great job. We have the same issue as the TSOs, um, that as we get towards the end of the summer, many of the employees go back to school. So um, we depend a lot on the senior staff and those um, staying. We want to thank those who worked very hard for the summer, and then um, just so everyone does know, uh, the harbor master, along with the fire department and the police, there is a boat fire going on right now while we are here. So they are busy all the time for many things. When you think about what they do, they're gonna do inspections of the boats. In, on August eleventh, we did eleven inspections. We found no violations, and that was between the outer moorings as well as Sag Harbor Yacht Club and the inner moorings, and then we had additional inspections on Au- August eighteenth. So they're looking at those as well as on a regular basis, looking at safety violations, speeding, and fishing violations. So um, we just want to thank them for all the good work that they do, and on the revenue side, we're running at a pace about eighteen percent uh, ahead of last year. And it looks like, you know, we continue to bring in extreme amount of revenue from the docks.
Thank you, trustee Kane. Can I get a motion to accept the department reports?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corus. Can I get a second? Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried. That brings us to our public comments portion of the meeting. Uh, we have fifteen minutes. Limit to three minutes per speaker concerning treasurer's report or department reports. Would anybody like to speak? Yes, come up, please, and say your name and your address for us.
Elizabeth Gilbert, nineteen Atlantic Avenue, speaking on my own behalf. Uh, in terms of the long-term planning, you're still going to be implementing a comprehensive.
We can't hear. There's a microphone turned on.
Maybe just project a little bit more.
And we'll try to repeat the question if it's not too long.
Someone could turn off the air conditioner back.
That might help you, yeah. Oh, there we go.
Uh, I just want to confirm with you that um, you're still planning on doing a comprehensive plan for the village.
We are still planning to do a comprehensive plan of the village. The planning, actually, I was talking about was more financial planning than the actual comprehensive planning. That is, that is still, that is still on, on the calendar for the village to pursue, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Tom Thorpe, one eighty-eight Suffolk Street Extension. Uh, I've got a petition here for the, the board regarding a safety issue on South Street. It's, yes, is this the time to bring that up?
I would, I would say to you, Mr. Thorpe, that I will push this forward for you. Absolutely. I'll see what I can do as far as enacting the twenty mile per hour speed limit. If it's a village road and it's within our purview, which I believe it is, we will see about reducing the speed to twenty miles an hour.
Fine, thank you. And if there's need to, to further conversation between the two of us or on site, please, uh, please get me a call. I'd be happy to.
Absolutely.
Whoever needs to be part of that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, please come forward and state your name and address.
Mary Ann Rodriguez, one sixty-five Suffolk Street, Sag Harbor. I would like to have a little addition to that. I think before, instead of having just the speed limit reduced, we need speed bumps. One on the side of it, and maybe a third right in on each one. Just coming down here tonight, I, I had to slam my brakes on because a little red car was in the way. We really need help. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Tell everybody your name and your address, Al. How you doing?
My name is Albert Ryan, one sixty-eight Suffolk Street. I've been there since the Kennedy administration. Uh, we, we got challenges uh, beyond speed limit. Um, I've confirmed there was uh, an event a couple nights ago, where I'm walking up Suffolk Street, and we've had a few folks with kids. I was walking, but it's clear if I wasn't, he going down. And I must certainly be running twenty mile an hour speed, although it's terrible, um, people that are inclined to use this as a drag strip.
Thank you, Al. Yes, ma'am. Just state your name and your address for us, please.
Jennifer Julie, one forty-five Suffolk Street. I'm a resident there for seventeen years, my husband for thirty-four years. The map traffic has exponentially grown. We call it the Madison Street bypass. We call it the Suffolk Street Speedway. Putting up twenty mile an hour signs, I agree. I don't think it's gonna be enough, because you don't have enough staff. Please force to enforce this speed limit in other parts of the district, in, no matter you, with this one. In Sag Harbor Street, including, I would encourage and consideration of speed bumps, whoever's street has it. It really deters people making that turns, speeding down quickly. I don't know how that was funded, or that was funded, I'm not sure, but it's something that would like to be more to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, Bob.
Yeah, I'm uh, I am totally in agreement with the speed bumps. There's a couple on Sag Main down by the beach. I like the fact that they're not marked till you, till you get right on top of it, because you hit it once and then you don't do it again. And they're engineered such that if you're going to speed limit, it doesn't, it's fine. Then if you're going faster than that, it, you know, can ra- hurt your car. So anyway, I'm actually for those in, in, in general.
Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Luke Jolly, one forty-five Suffolk Street. Years ago, prior administration, we put in, we were told by uh, Darren Yarley, put in some paperwork for it, and we'll get it, we'll see if it can happen. There are a lot of streets residential where kids are playing. The, the street I grew on, we had street signs that said, children at play. We have none of those on our street. There used to be some, like I said, on, right, on tennis world, there was a sign, but we don't have any in ours, so that would help too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did that two years ago.
Yes, ma'am. Just state your name and your address, please.
Hi, Sophie Smith, seven Oakland Avenue. Um, every street in Sag Harbor is, has the same problem. It's not one street that's not a problem. Uh, I live on Oakland. Um, I've watched with Jermaine Avenue, with the side, you know, blinking sign, I've seen people go fifty miles an hour there. Does anybody track that down?
We have data and, yes, on various streets in the village. And there are, there is some speeding. It's not as bad as you think it is compared to the cars, but I mean, somebody going twenty-five miles an hour down a residential street is a lot faster, you know, to the human eye. It is definitely, makes a difference, so.
I mean, if, I mean, I've walked this all over there with my dog.
The problem is that, that there's so much traffic.
Yes.
The data shows that, I mean, ninety thousand cars in a week. I mean, it's incredible, the amount of cars that are coming through this village.
Even not more.
So something needs to be done.
It's the same with the park entrance, exit. All the trucks, not the trucks, the escalades and the buses are coming now down Oakland Avenue. It's a very dangerous area there in the park. It really needs to be addressed for kids' safety. Um, if there was ever a fire in the park, nobody would be able to get out, because there's no exit, uh, exit avenue with the cars and trucks. So we should really address that.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor, um, so just to be, the park, again, it's not Mash Park you're referring to, correct? Mash, Mashinewark is not a village park. It's a privately owned park.
Yes.
But the Mash Park Board is looking at, in fact, they're working with Ed Hollander and others on two things. One is as has been in the papers multiple times over the last year or two, a capital program to improve the park. As part of that program is to work on an in, in entrance and egress section for the buses, not at the main entrance, but toward the side of the park, um, off of the turnpike. That intersection right in front of Mash Park has been a problematic in, intersection from, for some time. Um, I know at one point there was a circle proposed there, and that didn't get approved. It's very difficult to get in and out of Mash Park, and I understand, and I appreciate you living on Oakland Avenue, because I've done it too. When I see the traffic back up all the way to Oakland Avenue from the traffic light, I make a right down Oakland Avenue and sometimes leave that way. Yes.
Or Palmer Terrace.
Or Palmer Terrace, if it backs up that far, yes. Um, so that's an issue for us. Mash Park is working on not the front entrance egress and ingress, but the side for buses and larger vehicles, as well as the parking issue there, because with the emergence of pickleball, people have been parking all over the turnpike there, and that's creating a safety issue that they're concerned about as well. So they're working on that. And, and they're working with the town on that as well, because as you can imagine, it's complicated when you've got the village has a place in that Sag Harbor Turnpike Road, but that's a county road. The village has a place in it, and the private park has a place in that as well. All are working together to try to figure out a solution to calm the parking and traffic on the turnpike. Um, the entrance and egress from Matt, Mash Park is another issue, and as I said before, that circle was turned down, I think, a decade plus ago.
Do we know why that was turned down in retrospect? Because they seem to be pretty efficient at moving traffic. And, and slowing people down at the same time.
I think there was a lot of public outcry against it at the time.
I think there was.
But this is. But ten years ago, it's a lot different from today.
Yeah, so it might be worth revisiting that as a potential solution for calming the traffic around the park.
Yeah.
Uh, the buses are an issue, but that is frankly the function of the park, to bring teams in and out.
Maybe I, in the Hampton, it's blocking that air, you know, going on the turn.
But the park had another entrance for buses that would alleviate a huge amount of that issue on the corner there, because it's, it's a tough. on the corner there because it's a tough turn to make.
Yes, it is.
And in fact, the buses are not supposed to enter the front of the park. They're supposed to drop their
On the side.
On the sides. They're never supposed to enter the park.
Many buses, but I've seen people make U-turns from the front there, hitting the curb on the sidewalk.
Sometimes it's hard to know what to do if you're not familiar with the intersection.
It's a difficult intersection.
Yeah, there's a lot of interpretation going on on the fly as people are making their way in.
And so especially for those who are unfamiliar.
Yeah.
You address them?
I think a turning circle there would give everybody equal priority. And it would, it would allow people, when you have a green light, you can go screaming through, but with a turning circle, everybody has to slow down a little bit and pay attention. So maybe it's something worth looking at.
We can revisit it. Yes.
If you had a camera there watching, would the cars do? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Just on the traffic note. So tomorrow I'm meeting with the East End supervisors and mayors about the issue of traffic. And Lieutenant Drake will be there with me with our data showing how many cars are coming through the village because we have to, I think we have to work together with the other municipalities to come up with a solution or a part of the solution. But there's things obviously we can do within the village that can help. So anybody else want to speak? Who do you have, Cassie? Okay.
Hi, is it?
Yes, hi Catherine. Hi Catherine.
Catherine Levy. I'm at 244 Madison Street. It's unclear to me from the agenda whether you're going to address the issue of the Gaspar parking lot, but whether you are or not, I just want to commend the mayor and the trustees for mounting a legal challenge to the decision to award a ninety-nine year lease for the Gaspar lot to a private entity. I think Mr. Potter's recent demands about the lot clearly demonstrate that the national grid's decision was not in the public interest. And whatever the short term inconvenience, and believe me, I understand it might be considerable. I think it's important that the mayor and trustees are not agreeing to Mr. Potter's demands, which would give him far too much leverage over our village in the long term. So thank you for the firm stand you're taking.
Thank you. Thank you. Who else?
Hi, my name is Anita Sims Rainford of thirty-five Puffy Drive. I am, I would like to hear a little bit more from the harbor master perspective on pump outs. Do we have any numbers on how many pump outs were done and was there any violations or concerns with that regard?
Unfortunately, the harbor master is not present at the moment. They're fighting a boat fire off of Jessup's neck right now in New York. So.
But what?
I don't know if I, do you have the numbers, Jean?
Actually, the pump out boat numbers are at Southampton Town because the boat, the pump out boat is from Southampton. So even though they work in our marina, working with, you know, all of the village docks as well as yacht club and the yacht yard and, you know, the inner moorings and the outer moorings. For us, seven days a week, they are Southampton Town employees. So the numbers are actually recorded there. We do know the regularity and speak, you know, harbor master speaks on a regular basis with the pump out captains. So they know if there are issues or boats have not been using them. There was an issue that happened in August and that boat had to be removed and it can no longer dock in the marina. So that action was taken very swiftly. And I do know there was one anonymous call that I'd seen in the Sag Harbor Express. But I do not know if that was actually ever proven because I didn't hear that it was, but I, we can find that out.
Is it possible for us to get a report from Southampton Town on the pump out stunt in Sag Harbor Village waters?
Yes, we could. It's just not something, they don't report it. They don't report those numbers to us, but we can get them. Yeah, so we can bring them to next month's meeting if some, if.
Thank you. And then I just want a point of clarification. So the, even though the boats are the property of Southampton, do they extend over to the Azurus, Nineveh, Sag Harbor Hills part of the bay? Is that, because that's typically viewed as East Hampton. Are they extending their, their scope that far?
Any boats that are on either the inner mooring or the outer mooring can call the pump out boat and make a request. So yes, there are no pump out boats that currently come from East Hampton, even though it's East Hampton side. And part of that has been they were short boats and didn't have, didn't have availability and Southampton has covered it for quite some time now.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else, Cassie, on Zoom or anybody else out in the public? Okay, that ends the public comments section and that'll move us to introduction. We have a resolution to schedule a public hearing on October tenth, twenty twenty-three for local law to amend Village Code three hundred dash nine point one-two accessory apartments in the R twenty zoning district at three hundred dash nine point one, section B, paragraph five, placement of accessory buildings, structures and uses to reduce the size of an accessory structure and clarify code provisions. Do you want to speak on this, counsel, at all or?
This is really an effort to clarify a conflict in the code. The accessory buildings section of the code in three hundred dash nine point one B five limited the size of accessory structures to six, under six hundred square feet. And then it was not consistent with the accessory apartment section of the code, the accessory apartment law under three hundred nine point one-two. So we're trying to make sure we clarify what the minimum and maximum GFA would be for an accessory apartment size, as well as other sections of the accessory apartment law. Just clarifying that a covenant is required for certain restrictions on the use of the accessory apartment as well, which wasn't as clear as it could be. So.
So I just want to say that we're at the portion now where we're introducing these resolutions. So we're just setting the hearing. At the public hearing, we will welcome comments on these local laws and these resolutions and then take it from there. So I would say to please try and hold off on any comments at this time until we have the public hearing and then come forward with your questions or comments. So I need a motion to introduce this.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corish, seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. That moves us to number two, second resolution, which is to schedule a public hearing on October tenth, twenty twenty-three for a local law to amend local law amending Village Code three hundred, excuse me, three hundred, attachment one, use tables to add a public parking lot use. Do you want to speak on this briefly, counsel?
So this would be to amend the use table to add a public parking lot use to the code, which is not currently in the code. Municipal owned lots do not need this use because we are, as a municipality, the village is authorized to have a public parking lot pursuant to general municipal law. But this would allow for a private parking lot to have a public parking lot use, which would be added to the code in the RMVB and OD zoning districts. And the use would be described as a principal use, and I think we have to add here of private property as a parking lot or parking area where the entire lot remains open to the public at all times and free of charge. So that is the introduction and there'll be a public hearing on this on October tenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. But we would have to, we'll be inserting the word private for the private property.
Could you just state again where we're inserting the word private?
Right, it says a principal use of private property. We'll be inserting the word private there. As a parking lot or parking area where the entire lot remains open to the public at all times and free of charge.
So under that definition of public parking lot.
Correct.
Do I have a motion to introduce?
Hello.
And set the public hearing? Motion by trustee Plum, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So carried. That brings us to the final resolution for introduction, which is resolution to schedule a public hearing again on October tenth, twenty twenty-three for local law to create Village Code, chapter two fifty-three, tree preservation.
This is an ongoing effort to address tree preservation in the village. Here at our latest iteration talks about, reintroduces the idea of clearing to the code because we had taken that out and simply focused on tree preservation. But this is an effort to address when a property owner clears their property entirely and requires revegetation of that property in front of the Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review. So we've added that language. We've also emphasized that the trees, the, the DBH of the tree is, is now at eighteen inches. So that was, that was clarified as well and you can see that in the code. And then this will be on for a public hearing on October, I think, October meeting as well.
July tenth.
Fifteen inches?
No, we said eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yeah.
But you know, that's the board's preference and if they, you're going to hear from the public on that as well. So.
Do I have a motion to set the hearing?
So moved.
Move, motion by trustee Corish, a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. So that moves us on to public hearing. We have local law amending Village Code three hundred dash eleven point twenty-three, sections A and D, and three hundred dash fifteen point two, section A, to change the reviewing authority for special exemption permits to the, in the waterfront overlay district from the Village Board of Trustees to the Planning Board. I believe this is already an open public hearing. Does anybody like to come forward and comment on this?
We have to open the public hearing.
I thought it was, okay, the motion to open?
I'm of it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. So the public hearing is now open. Does anybody want to comment on this? Is it in reference to this? Yes.
Is it in reference to this public law? Hello, Paul Roberts at Seventy-six Merit. It's not reference to the public law. I had a question on something else.
Okay, so. Wait. Does anybody have to comment on? No comment? Do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Silas? Please state your name again, where you live.
Silas Mortar, one seventy-five Main Street. Wanted to ask you to reconsider this change. I think that the things that this affects are going to be some of the biggest things that affect this entire village. And I think that they should be involved elected officials and not volunteer boards. I'd ask you to please reconsider.
Okay. Anybody else?
I mean, this was passed as part of the, was it the waterfront overlay or the affordable housing?
Anyway, it was part of it, yeah.
This is only about a year old and it was never this way for the prior, the last, last fifty years, whatever. It's brand new. And I, I think that we, we became aware there were unintended consequences of it largely in part because we, as the board, we're not able to talk about projects that we were going to be voting on. So I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I think that was, we felt that was a major constriction on our, on our input, really.
Counsel, you want to?
Sure, it was just, I mean, basically special exception permits in the code are under the purview of the planning board. There's only one exception to that, which is the cell tower exception. And generally speaking, you know, the planning board also has the authority over site plans. So they review special exception use permits and site plans concurrently together. And there are, there are specific planning standards that that board is very used to applying to applications before it. And that's really all that you're authorized under New York State Village Law to do, which is apply the special exception standards to the application before it. And generally speaking, it would just be in keeping with the current code provisions to have the planning board do that. Also, once this board, you know, this board didn't have to create a planning board, but when it did, you delegated that authority. And once you delegate that authority, you're typically not supposed to interfere with it thereafter. So.
I mean, how, how I see this, our, our role in all of this is we create the code. We're elected by you. We are your representatives. We should be free to speak to you about any, on any subject that comes in front of the village for discussion. And the boards are there to apply the code. And so when we get into a situation where we're part of the application and the creation, we find ourselves, it's almost like a gag order where we can't speak freely and publicly and express our opinions as representatives. And nor can we have open and, and honest conversations with you because otherwise as people who would oversee some of these applications, we could be asked to recuse ourselves because we've already expressed an opinion without having had a full hearing. So I think this, this sort of cleans up something that was probably created with the best interest, but the reality is I've had unintended consequences that are, I believe, to be very detrimental to the running of the village. And so I'm very much in favor of what you've proposed, ma'am.
I would just say, you know, we have very capable people on, on all of our boards and they're village residents that care deeply about this village and that they're donating their time and they're focusing on these applications and they're applying the standards to maintain the village character the way it is. So this is why I pushed, propose this.
And the planning board, the planning board, when they're applying these standards, generally, they're not allowed to consider generalized community opposition, right? Which is what sort of this board hears all the time.
Right.
So it's, it's much easier to distinguish what they're permitted to do under the law if you keep it within the planning board.
It's just, it's a form, another form of checks and balances and, which is how the government's supposed to work. So. Any more comments on this? We have somebody raising their hand. Yes, sir. Just state your name and your address, please.
Hi, Dr. Snubey, two forty-four Madison. One comment, really more than a question. I think one of the concerns a few years ago was, um, the, 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 the individual board members don't have insurance coverage if they're threatened with lawsuits for any, any actions they take. So I'm not sure whether there's any ability under the village's insurance policies to extend that coverage so that the individuals aren't being, being threatened with personal actions.
That's not true, sir. There, every, every official of the village is indemnified by the village, provided they're acting within the scope of their authority and within the scope of their job duties that they're authorized to do under the law. There's a section in our code on indemnification if you want to look it up.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Dr. Doug. Thank you. Okay.
I'm Catherine Levy. I also live at two forty-four Madison Street. I, I fully understand what trustee Corish is saying about the unintended consequences of the change that happened in twenty twenty-one. You know, I think that everybody is particularly concerned about the latest Bridge Street proposal. And I just want to speak to my principal concern. This board last year identified thirteen potential adverse environmental impacts of the previous Potter proposal on Bridge Street and determined that there would have to be an E I S. I just want to make sure about two things. One, as the, if the planning board becomes the lead agency, will their, their first priority be to create an environmental assessment? And will your previous determination of those thirteen potential adverse environmental impacts have any bearing on what they decide? Because I think the issues are basically the same for this, this current proposal for Bridge Street.
I don't think we can, I'm not about to comment on any particular application, but
Counsel?
I would say that.
No, the planning board is obligated to review and undergo SECR and apply SECR to the application. If, we'll see if it's going to be a lead agency or not. It's going to coordinate. And there's a process to go through. So we have to wait for that process to happen. We're not going to speculate as to what is going to happen with respect to SECR or any specific applications before the planning board.
It's a new application.
It's a new application. It starts from, yeah.
I, I would say that if you look at the, the goals and the, the, how can I say this? If you look at what the basic principle If you look at what the basic principle of each one of the boards is, the planning board, the ARB, the ZBA. It's to maintain and protect the village, the quality of life, the overall health of its residents. I mean, there's, there's quite a few standards that have to be met by any applicant for for a number of reasons. So I'm fully confident that our boards will be able to handle any application that comes before them. And I would say that that this particular piece of legislation just says that out loud and goes back to the way things should be in local government.
We as a board should be free to speak on any issue that comes in front of the village. And what this legislation did that we're trying to undo was essentially stymied our ability to do that openly and freely. We couldn't have those conversations that we were elected to have. And so I feel very confident that this is going to allow us to have those conversations that help maintain the character of the village, like the mayor has just described. And I think it's an important change we need to make. I personally felt very gagged when I inquired after this law was passed. And we were confronted with various issues as to what we could or could not say on or off the record. And it would mean that we may be recusing ourselves from the very responsibility that this law was conferring upon us down the road. So it kind of made a mockery out of our position as being elected public representatives. And so I feel moving ahead, I'm going to be a lot more confident and a lot more comfortable knowing that we don't have this sort of responsibility that's not really, or should not be part of our purview. We appoint the boards and we vote on them. They're not just people who show up, they're vetted. And I have great confidence in all of our boards, and they have a lot more, a lot more experience at doing this than we do. We, we have a different responsibility.
Yeah, and to that, to that point, Aiden, you know, anybody who comes before the mayor and and or that I approach or ask them if they want to serve or wants to serve, they present a resume. And we all look at the resume, we decide if this person is appropriate for the position, and then, like you say, we vote on it, yeah, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, but this specifically lets the planning board grant special exemption use, and that's where it stops. In other words, they're saying, okay, you can, you can, we'll give you a special exemption for this use in that zone.
If it meets the permit standards.
If it meets the permit standard.
They apply the permits, the standards of that use to the application.
But then it still has to go to the ZBA and the ARB and.
Oh, of course.
So this is like the first step in what would be a serious law.
And any, and any application can fall at any hurdle. Once you, once you get approval by one board, it means nothing to the next board because their their purview is different. And their areas of responsibility and investigation are completely different. And that's the way it should be, because there's a very complicated process. I have great faith in this. I really do, and I've thought about it a lot over the last six to nine months. I think this is the right decision for the village.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am.
Hi, Elizabeth Gilroy, yeah, I just, I think there's some confusion about what this extends to. And that the planning board already approves special exception permits, sorry, for everything outside the waterfront district. This is just about the waterfront district, and it will conform to the rest of the the rest of the rules that the planning board operates normally. And I think people don't realize that.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen, former mayor Kathleen Mulcahy. Hi. You don't have to say anything.
Address.
This, yeah, they should know you by now, Kathleen, I would think.
I just want to thank you, Mayor Gardella, and the whole board for bringing us up. I think this is the right thing to do, without a doubt. And there's a reason it was that way before. There's a reason I should go back to that. The planning board is trained in these things, has the times due this right and everything else. It delays a lot of trustees, so I'm just saying thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Anyone else that wants to speak on this? Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
I'm of it.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corus, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That moves us on to a continued public hearing. A local law to amend village code two twenty dash four point four, section E. Noncomplying wastes, grease trap requirements, and to amend the requirements for grease traps. Motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, second, it's already open, right? Okay. So did you want to speak on this?
I'll speak on this a little bit. We've, we've, we introduced this some time ago. We have an ongoing issue in the village where certain grease traps are not being taken care of to the detriment of the smooth running of the sewage treatment plant. We get backups, we get grease down there that upsets the entire operation. So we never really had any tools other than disconnecting your premises, and there's no real way of doing that. There's no stopcock or shallow valve. So the idea of this was to introduce the ability for code enforcement to apply certain rules and have certain penalties for people who don't comply with the requirement. We test these, we test these grease traps regularly. Anybody who's a regular attendee here will will know that a large percentage of them fail, and we just need to have more tools to be able to remedy the situation. We invited, tonight, we invited all the owner, anybody who had a grease trap in the village was invited to attend to make sure that they are all aware that this was happening. We also have Mark Wagner of Cameron Engineering might be available, who is just going to speak to the importance of this before this law goes into place. I think it's important, and I think it's for the benefit of the village. So I'll hand it over to Mark if he's available.
Hello, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
He's muted.
You're muted.
Can't hear you.
Unmute.
We need a sign to hold up.
Yeah.
Still muted.
He just says goodbye. Can't hear you, can't hear you.
Unmute.
Some of my best words, I just said them, it's too bad you didn't hear. So just, just some ABCs of the grease traps. You know, the purpose is for any establishment that that serves food. The idea is there's fats, oils, and greases associated with these food establishments. And this first line of defense of the sewage system is that a properly functioning grease trap accept the waste from the kitchen, that's the slop sinks, and if they have floor drains and the kitchen sinks, that that waste be directed to a properly designed and maintained grease trap. And what happens if they're not properly maintained? The best example I can give you is the arteries in your system, and the grease is like the plaque in your arteries. And that grease, once it hits a cold pipe, a sewage pipe, immediately comes out a solution and starts to coat the pipes. If, if that, if that occurs on the, on the piping, on the parcel itself before it makes it into the village's wastewater system, you're going to have a stoppage within the food establishment. And that brings up public health concerns of of raw sewage backing up into the floor drains or the, or the toilets not not properly functioning. And and that, and that's a real serious concern. If the grease does make it off the parcel, it gets into the village's collection system, it will start to coat the piping that that transports the sewage down to the wastewater treatment plant. So what does that mean? That means there's less carrying capacity in the, in the sewer system. And more times than not, other things will start to attach to the grease. And before you know it, there's a blockage, and the blockage may not affect only that parcel causing the problem. The blockage could be impacting twenty to thirty other connections upstream of the blockage. These things normally happen in the wee hours of the morning or late at night. DPW must respond, they must get a licensed plumber. Sometimes it involves a rotor rudering or high, high pressure and vacuum, high pressure to clear the blockage and vacuums to to remove the grease debris. More times than not, much of that material, even if it's broken loose and collected, works its way now down to the wastewater treatment plant. Where it causes malfunctions in the pumps, preventing the pumps from getting the wastewater into the plant where it can properly be treated, and so on and so forth. So it's very important, and I think, I think the first, the first thing starts with a lot of education of the parcel owners that have these food establishments. The types of materials that end up going down the kitchen sink, so to speak, or non-diversable wipes, grease, food scraps. The, you can't use the the grease trap as a solid waste disposal system. It should only be seeing liquids that contain fats, oils, and grease. Solids and cleaning and pots and that, and that stuff should not be entering into the grease trap. So I'm, I'm getting a little in the weeds, but the, the, the code talks about minimum size grease traps. That all grease traps should be a minimum of fifteen hundred gallons. That's the minimum size. And the grease traps should be properly designed, meeting Suffolk County Department of Health and Suffolk County DPW standards. The village code mirrors those two agencies, so the grease trap design is not a special village design. It is in consonance with well-established regulatory standards. And and the village DPW staff and and with assistance from the plant staff has done a great job in going out and starting to measure and determine if, if, if there's been proper maintenance on these grease traps. And what this code speaks to is about having proper logbooks on site demonstrating that the grease traps have indeed been pumped out by licensed Carter. All that material, all that documentation should be available for the village, DPW, and treatment plan operators to take a look at. If there are stoppages on the site, I believe the amended code speaks to this. There's a certain amount of time that the parcel owner has to clear, to clear the problem. If it's not cleared, DPW will take the lead on getting it cleared. And any of the costs associated with clearing that blockage will be put back on to the parcel owner. So I think this is, from what I read on the changes in the code, very comprehensive. And we'll, we'll start to have a, a frontline defense of the village's collection system, its treatment plant. And also should be reducing public health concerns about blockages occurring in these devices on, on the parcel themselves.
Thanks, Mark. That's great. Give us a pretty comprehensive overview of why this code change is important.
Anybody have any questions for Mark or?
Nope, I'm good.
I think this is important to protect our infrastructure and our sewage treatment plant. I think it's vital.
I think we're lucky we haven't had a major backup yet.
Well, we've had some significant backups.
Knock on wood.
Well, like every restaurant.
And are, are any restaurants here tonight?
I don't know. Is there anybody here from any of the restaurants?
Anybody want to speak on this at this time? Nobody? Could you, could you, yeah, come, come forward, Kay. Yeah, she said Richard's Drive.
I'm Richard's Drive, thirty-three.
They are, the fines are.
Yeah, and there's a chargeback provision as well.
Yeah, so that if the, if the, the act of removing the grease costs the village any, any, any money, which it is right now, we'll be able to charge that back to the, in addition to the fine, there'll be a chargeback for the cost of remediating the situation. Right now, the sewage treatment district is bearing that burden, and so we'll shift that back. So I think it's a, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this proposed legislation? No?
There's, this is a resolution of adoption. I apologize, it still says, so public hearing, so.
We are adopted. So we can, we can close the.
Close the public hearing.
Yes, let's make, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, a second? Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Closed. Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corus, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, motion is adopted.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, have a good evening, everybody. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
So that brings us to local law to amend chapter two fifteen, seasonal use dwelling unit registry to create a rental permit registry for the village of Sag Harbor. And this is already open, so we don't need a motion to open it. So we would welcome any more public comments. I would just say that, you know, we started out with trying to produce something that would make people aware that would, about smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, proper means of egress, you know, basic safety issues, so that landlords were aware of this and that they would adhere to those standards. And it just seems like this just keeps getting, we're trying to to narrow it down.
We got some letters this week, we got some more comments. I think the plan is to keep this open till the end of the year, and the whole idea is safety. We're not interested in interfering with people's right to our property or, or anything like that becomes onerous. We want the responsibility to remain with the property owner as opposed to with the village. I'm pretty happy with the way, with, with, with the text of the code right now is proposed and.
Right, we'll welcome any comments.
We've just received some written comments. We still have to assess the comments coming in and then see if we want to make any more adjustments.
Adjustments to that as time goes on. So there's still time, because this is something we want in place for next season. So the idea that would be either the December or January meeting, we would hope to be able to adopt. But we're open for more suggestion between now and then, and we'll, we'll consider everything in context.
If I could too, I think that, you know, we, we've just introduced legislation around ADUs as well. And and this would be the enforcement, in some respects, potential for that as well, right? This would interact with that at least, this legislation. So we want to make sure we're thinking of all these things in concert. As we're introducing new legislation, how does it fit with the existing legislation with anything else we propose? And and these are all in flight, so we just want to be conscious of that, as well as all the comments that keep coming in. Thank you, everybody, for the comments that keep coming in. It's important, everybody, that we get this down between now and the end of the year, as trustee Corus said.
And to provide clarity in the code, which is you know, always a goal, because as different amendments happen over different times. And it's just the same as we're doing with some of the other things that we just stated earlier. This is a goal of this as well.
Somebody had their hand raised, then too. Okay, let's hear from Paul.
Hi, Paul Roberts with, I'm at seventy-six Meredith Avenue in Sag Harbor. The question I have is, does the safety requirement, I'm trying to understand why there's also, I guess, a minimum rental requirement that you have to rent your property out for a month. How does that relate to the safety requirement in the, in the, in the proposal?
The seasonal limitation, no less, I think, than fourteen days is already in the code. It's always been in the code. So that's just being reiterated here, but it's already in the code, and it's always been in the code.
But I think they want to increase it to a month, I think is what I've read in the code.
Let me see, no, it's, I think there's.
It says, it's the idea of transient rental.
Two a year, I believe.
In no event shall a seasonal rental for a period of less than thirty consecutive days, excepting within any calendar year, rentals of two weeks, not more than twice, is permitted. That's language already in the code, and it's not being changed. So you can have two, two weeks, two periods of two weeks. That's the method. That's always been in the code. It's in, if you, if you want to take a look, it's two fifteen, three, six.
Thank you, I'll take a look at that.
All right, thanks. I think that the three hundred pound gorilla in the room is Airbnb and.
Enforcement.
Enforcement, and we're going to have to really see how we're going to approach this, because if anybody goes, there's, I think there's actually a website that will do this for you. Or if you just go on the internet and type in Sag Harbor Airbnb, you'll. Or if you just go on the internet and type in Sag Harbor Airbnb, you'll see that there's many short-term rentals that are out there. And so what this is intended to do is provide some enforcement for code provisions that have existed for some time. Um, just by the registration process and adherence to the safety provisions that are on the homeowner is really, becomes an enforcement piece as well.
It brings it out of the shadows.
Yes.
Because there's an enforcement that applies to everybody, and so you can't just, you can't hide.
I think that we're gonna have to have a discussion about the the short-term rentals because it's providing, it is providing income for our residents. How do we approach it? Do we, either we enforce it, what's on the books now on the code? Or do we try to try another method to possibly bring in some revenues? I think that we can't do that without going through the state. From what I heard, but it's a discussion that we need to have.
Separate. One is safety. What we're talking about.
Trying to focus on safety.
And purely safety that we have smoke, carbon monoxide swimming pools are safe.
Another problem I see is that with enforcement is that typically or a lot of times, a neighbor has to rat out the neighbor. And that's not such a great thing to have to do.
But I think if the homeowner is attesting to how they're have to have inspected the property, have gone through the checklist and that they're complying with the law, that is the foundation for enforcement.
Yes, and it's a notarized assessment.
Yes.
Yeah, and that helps an awful lot of enforcement type groups.
And that's self, um.
Yes.
Do we, okay. Somebody else? Ma'am, would you like to come forward?
Yeah, I'm Spencer Forty-Five Division Street. So my question is, does the code differ between the Southampton side and the East Hampton side of the village?
No, there's one village. We have one code that applies. Yes.
Yes, for both sides.
Okay.
It's the village, yeah. Somebody else has their hand up, Cassie? Yes?
Hi, uh, good evening, Mayor Cardella and trustees. I'm Lisa Stenson Desamores of Seventeen Hillside Drive West and president of the Sag Harbor Hills Improvement Association. So yesterday I did submit some follow-up questions and I certainly appreciate that the focus of the amendments to the chapter two fifteen are around safety and that's absolutely applauded. It's since that section of the code is being amended, uh, I did have some requests uh for consideration, um which is, I took a look at the town of East Hampton code respecting rentals and our HBBC overlay district is on the side of Division Street. That is part of the town of East Hampton and the East Hampton code does permit transient rentals of under fourteen days twice in a six-month period. So we're hopeful that you will consider a slight amendment as to enable a permit, a rental permit for a couple rentals under fourteen days, even if it's a minimum of seven days. So that was one of my questions. Um, a second question that I had submitted is around basically otherwise the minimum thirty days. And what a minimum thirty-day rental period does is trigger potential squatters rights for a tenant. And then a homeowner uh would need to engage in a two-pronged process to evict the tenant. And we've had instances uh within our HBBC community of protracted eviction proceedings and a lengthy timeframe for a homeowner to resume possession of their residence. Um, so if there's any possibility for a rental permit to be obtained if the minimum tenure is twenty-nine days versus the thirty days. And then the third question around how will the village um enforce violations?
All valid questions that we're reviewing now and considering.
The twenty-nine day is a very good point.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, that's something we would consider.
We received your written submission of of requests in the last two days, so we'll spend time now going through those as well as the other comments we proceeded. And see how we can incorporate some or all of that into what we're doing, or at least understand if we don't and explain if we don't.
This, can we create a new version of this for the next meeting once the public hearing is open?
Yes.
We can adjust it so then we can have, we can incorporate some of these amendments.
Changes.
So that when we'll have a different document or a slightly altered document for consideration in uh in October.
Much like the tree legislation.
Much like the tree.
Cause it was.
It changed so much. Okay. Thank you for those comments. Really insightful and helpful. Really appreciate it.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your willingness to consider them. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Lisa.
Somebody else, Cassie?
Hi, thank you so much. I am at eighty-five Hempstead Street, also eleven Puppy Drive along the corner. And I missed the first part of this, so I do apologize if I say anything repetitive. But I wanted to know how long, um, cause most of this code, as you have said, has been in effect for a long time. Does it predate uh the rise and um usage of Verbo and Airbnb? And has that has just a changing market take been taken into consideration along with obviously responsible homeownership where you're providing, you're abiding by the laws and file following all safety guidelines, et cetera, when you do rent um your house or your home for for short, short durations? Does that make sense?
Does.
Thank you.
Liz, you, can you speak to the first part?
I just have the code and I don't have the original, how long it's been in the original code. I'd have to look.
I think that that's another, this, another topic for discussion, as I said. It's something that we're gonna.
I mean, it's the evolution
Yeah.
of as Airbnb was created, just like um mayor mentioned, things have changed and then obviously COVID. Um, there were very different demands and it became more long-term. Now, there could be um go- going back to pre-COVID and having more short-term demand. Um, so we appreciate these questions and we will continue to evaluate. As we said, it's kind of a living document as we are um hearing from the different members of the public and we'll, we will welcome any of these questions.
Should we be looking at two different uh bills or two different codes to separate the safety aspect from the renter? Do you think?
I don't think you can absolutely separate them, honestly. I think there's gonna be some overlap because some of this, the rental red, a permit is not just a safety permit.
Right.
It's more than that.
Permission as well. Okay. And then is.
It's a permit.
It's a rental permit.
Alright, yeah. And that is the issue of, uh, is there a difference if the owner is in residence? And they're not.
They said, these are, this is the things that I was, wanted to discuss is, is, is it somebody that lives there most of the year and then does a short-term rental at a certain part of the season or rents or lives there and rents a room? Like, these are all things we're gonna have to discuss.
Also, is there a, if you wanted to rent it for two weeks and then two weeks went by, you rented it two weeks again, are there two rental permits involved?
No, no, your your rental permit, well. It's, it's, the rental permit goes with the property for the year. Um, when you're gonna submit a lease saying who the potential renter is, um, then you'd be giving that additional information to the building department.
I mean, it might be too unwieldy, but that would be a way of keeping track.
Do we need to have a work session on this?
I think so.
Be a lot of issues that hard.
I think that we need to have a work session on this, yes.
Just so that we can get our arms around this and and.
So we'll, yeah, we'll keep the public hearing open and we'll schedule a work session to discuss these issues.
That'll be helpful.
Alright. Anybody else want to comment before I move on? No? Okay, so that moves us on to discussion items and motion to continue, motion to continue public hearing, deputy mayor Hay. Seconded, seconded by trustee Corus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's continued. So that moves on to discussion items. We have uh Rusty from Nelson Pope and Voorhees, correct? Is he on Zoom?
Yes.
To discuss uh rain gardens and the projects that we're working on.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Rusty.
How are you today?
Good. So just, if I could just say that these projects were put on hold with the previous administration because there was an incident that happened on the Southampton side. Um, one of the rain gardens was filled in or in the process of redesigning that rain garden and continuing on the work with the other projects. And I called Rusty in as soon as I became the mayor. And we sat down and we went over the projects that are ready to go and where the other projects stand. And here's Rusty with his report.
Yeah, okay. So um the two rain gardens that uh that are uh remaining from the original grant on the Southampton side um are the Amherst Road Ra- uh Road End Rain Garden and at Cove Road, Road End Rain Garden and um, uh, both of those, um, uh, we we need to, you know, reevaluate and redesign and we're planning on doing that over the uh, over the winter and I will uh love to work with uh uh, not only Dee but also the entire uh board directly and make sure that we are getting a garden that everyone's gonna approve of and then uh and then also make sure that we work with the neighborhood itself. So that's, uh, so that's where we're at with that one. Um, if, um, does anybody have any questions? I just, oh, and I was at the uh CPF uh town board uh with Southampton earlier today and um I did talk to them and uh let them know that we would like to uh reengage with them and they were uh receptive to that.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. I also heard from Southampton. I don't know if you, I'm sure you're aware of this, Rusty, but the project down at the uh end of Middle Highway or Middle Line Highway in Sag Harbor, where the Round Pond is.
Yes.
That project is gonna begin in the next week or so.
So we did, we designed those. Um, we've been working with the town of Southampton. They're all ready to go. Uh, SFA is the contractor. Uh, their contract is now finally uh approved. And yes, they're uh looking to start uh next week, I believe. So that's uh moving forward as well.
Do we have any other? I know we talked about the project, I believe, in Sag Harbor Hills at the end of Terry and Milton Drive there.
Right. Yep. So now on the East Hampton side, so I started with the Southampton, East Hampton side, um, the Azure's neighborhood. Um, uh, we've been work, I've been working with uh the neighborhood there. Um, I have approval from uh almost all of the homeowners. Um, there is one more I want to uh reach out to and catch um that showed initial interest and we have a design for. Um, I'm hoping to have that finalized and uh and uh once we, and I'm hoping to have that finalized uh uh in the next week or so. And as soon as that's ready to go, then I'd like to uh bring that to you and um and Dee again and make sure that everyone at the ta- or at the village are happy. Um, and those plans have already been approved by the town. So that is ready to go. I just want to make sure that that last homeowner is ready and then that can, uh, depending on how the village feels, that can be uh, uh, run through uh bid process and likely can get built yet this fall in October, uh, end of October, early November.
Excellent.
Can I just, can I ask one question? So, um, does the village continue to maintain it or is it the homeowner's or is it a combination?
It's a homeowner uh maintenance. However, in the contract, we're gonna have the contract, uh, we're gonna have the contractor manage it for three years um as a line item, uh, so until they're uh fully established.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Then, um, the the other one that I want to talk about is at the, right in front of Coral Maria. Um, uh, along Bay Street, we have three ring urns completely designed, ready to go. Um, and so, um, uh, that, those are ready to go. I'm just uh waiting for the right season here. I'd like to put them under uh with the village approval. I'd like to put them out for bid and get those uh three gardens built uh yet this fall as well.
I would say get us whatever documents are needed, Rusty, for us to approve because I'm ready to go. I believe we're all, yep, well, ready to go and get these shovels in the ground. Um, I'd like, it's it's part of, it's part of the overall, you know, mitigation program.
Right. Then, um, uh, the other, uh, we have uh money approved from iconic history program. Um, and I'm working with our engineers. Um, I again will come to you very shortly. Uh, same time with all these other projects to potentially have SFA, who has been working out at uh Round Pond to do a mill and overlay to uh remedy the the uh Bay Street this fall after all the traffic starts to die down. Um, so sometime November timeline. Uh, and uh, uh, re- redo the Bay uh Bay uh uh Bay Street to make sure that the water is entering the permeable pavements as uh they were originally designed.
Excellent. Yeah. Across from Marine Park, we're talking, right?
Is that where? Yes. Yeah, right, yeah, right, right in front of Marine Park, yeah. And in front of the yacht club. And then, and then, um, I'm uh just finalizing uh a design for at Havens Beach uh that we're gonna put in an additional uh rain garden. Again, this is iconic history program funds. Uh, uh, an additional rain garden at Havens Beach. Um, so as you're looking at the beach, the far west corner or left side of the parking lot, um, that was an original opportunity that we wanted to put in a rain garden. That's where there is a drain and really get the water to go uh out into that uh location. We didn't uh build that garden originally because of permit. Um, so I'm just trying to finalize the design. I'd like to run it past the board, make sure you're happy and then uh put it up for, get the permit started. So that would be probably, uh, depending on how fast we can do permits, it would be a spring, uh, uh, twenty twenty-four or worst case, fall twenty twenty-four construction. Um, and then the other piece to that is there's a big puddle out in the middle of the uh, that that forms every time it rains. Um, and we're like to put a trench drain to take that water from the big puddle and put it into the existing rain gardens that are currently there.
Perfect. I, all I would say, Rusty, again, is just get it, please, get us whatever approvals you need as soon as you can. Cause I'd like to start moving forward on this as quickly as I can.
Absolutely. So the the plan is trying to get everything to you next week, uh, and uh and sit down with you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I love the background, by the way.
Oh, thank you. It's actually a meadow that we designed and built at the Sisters of Saint Joseph in Brentwood. So uh, if you're gonna, if I'm gonna talk, uh, native plants, you should, you know, show them off behind yourself.
There you go. I, there is one question. So Rusty, when we spoke, you said that you were both metering and testing, for example, the outflows in Azure's.
Yes.
So can you speak a little bit to how you're measuring the ef- the efficacy of the rain gardens?
Yes, so uh we used an ISCO sampler. It's a um, uh sampler that we uh, that uh on the corner of Terry and um oh, hold on, I gotta, I gotta remember the name of the street.
Milton.
Milton.
Yep, Milton, yes, thank you, Milton. Um, um, so at the corner of uh Terry and Milton, that's the last uh inlet before going, before the outfall going out to the water. We put in an ISCO sampler which measured both uh the speed of the of the water, the volume of the water, but then also did a grab samples and took uh water out of the system and put them into uh catch uh containers that we then took the the water and brought it to um our labs and tested it for nitrogen phosphorus, total suspended solids, uh, heavy metals, the whole works. So uh that's what, we did that for almost a year and a half. Um, um, and then what we're, and we uh made sure to get out there after a number of big rains. Now that we're putting in the rain gardens, we'll put the uh, the ISCO sampler has been taken away. Um, but when we get the rain gardens back installed, we'll put the ISCO sampler back out and can, and then sample again for about a year and a half to uh demonstrate. to uh demonstrate and show what kind of reductions both of water quality and volume that were, that are going to that catch basin.
Question, can an ISCO sampler detect coliforms?
Yeah, um yeah, well, yes. So it is uh taking a grab sample. So whatever is in that water, we did uh go, uh we did uh uh request fecal coliform as well.
That's something we'd consider for Windmill Beach.
And then for.
Exactly.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry. For, for the plan for Havens Beach, will you have similar before an after sampling as well?
No, we don't really have an opportunity to, uh there's no real easy covert there. So I had, uh I have no um standard methodology to uh test the water. It is better to to put it into a pipe and and, you know, show the flow coming in. But I am doing this similarly at Three Mile Harbor um uh for the town of East Hampton. We did the exact same methodology there. The rain gardens have just been built. We'll be bringing that ISCO sampler out uh this coming season uh for a year to test that spot as well.
So when you say that spot, you know.
Uh the Three Mile Harbor project, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, oh, by Sook Heights Road.
Are you using that sampling methodology anywhere else than Sag Harbor?
Not, no, no, not yet. Uh we, it's uh, it's not, it's not inexpensive. That's the first problem. And then the second, the second piece to that is I really need to have it, I I need to put it in a location where I have uh easy access to a catch basin. We could do it um at future projects, any and uh any of the roadway projects that we'd like to uh that are draining water to a uh a catch basin that outlets into the bay.
Thank you.
Thank you Rusty.
Uh do you have, if there's any other questions, otherwise I'll, I'll sign off.
Anybody have any questions?
Not for now, but more for later.
Yes, thank, yes, thank you Rusty. Please, please get us, get us whatever, you know, we need to execute as soon as you can, so we can.
I'm, yep, the plan is next week, so not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to Sag Harbor Community Rowing Club. There's Lee here, Lee Oldak.
Yeah.
Wanna come forward and just to set the stage here, Lee had met with me and discussed the issue with the rowing club and the dock or lack thereof of of dockage for the rowing club. And he has a proposal or an idea to find a solution. So that's why he's here.
Okay. We're proposing a dock that comes straight out of the Cove Road park that's there. Uh would be a low profile dock. It would be suitable for uh rowing shells, paddle boards and kayaks open to all the village residents. It's not the, it'd be no cleats on this dock, so no power boats can pull up to the pile for the day. It would be strictly for the launching of those boats. Um it would be ten foot wide, which would allow uh to be able to put boats in the water from either side at the same time. And the dock itself would go out approximately sixty, seventy-five feet, which is uh longer than the dock next door Redwood Marina, but not even half as long as what's at the other marina. Uh ship shore, that's over in that side. Uh I did submit a proposal that was done ten years ago, I guess. Uh it's still pretty much along those same lines as far as going with the, except that we're gonna try and that what we got to work with to eliminate the piles, have it attached on the shore and then crisscross anchors at the end. I did send some pictures to Kate today. I don't know if any of you got them.
They're in the, yeah, I already seen them, yeah.
I was just down at a rowing club in Lake Wally, North Carolina. That's almost identical dock to what we're proposing to put in there. So it would be attached to shore on some decking and then a ramp down to the dock and then go out that about.
And also these, these, the dock would be removable, in other words, you'd be able to take it out.
Come out in the wintertime. Uh each section is uh roughly seven and a half feet by ten feet. Uh they weigh about four hundred pounds. There's companies telling me that four people can lift them and put them where they need.
And this is no cost to the village. You just need our permission or
We need your permission to
To continue the process.
The authorities are that active.
Well, the harbor committee would certainly be committed, couldn't have to be.
Would you store it uh in the location?
That would be the idea that I
Just to take it up on land and
Take it up on land closer to the road.
Yeah, and and it would be accessible to the public. In other words, somebody in a kayak or a non-powered boat would be able to.
Uh does this proposal have to go to harbor committee?
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
Just be since it's village property, it has to come here first and then.
At sixty feet seems odd, long, just offhand. Um do you need that bush length?
Uh in order to, the rowing shells themselves are the quads, the four-person boats are forty feet long. If we ever have it grow and have the potential to put an eight-man boat there, we're gonna use in the Olympics, that's a sixty-foot boat.
Right.
So that's, that's the idea to be able in the future or if we have invited other clubs over, to be able to launch one or, one or two of those boats.
Okay, just a quick question on the diagram here. I don't know if this will be updated. It shows us ninety-six feet.
Uh that was, that was the original
Oh, this is, okay, so.
Back there, this needs to be modified, but we want, before I put first coastal work there.
Okay.
I wanted to just get past.
Yeah, excuse me one minute, Lee. Chief, blow it on. Could you turn the air conditioner back on for us, please?
Yeah.
It's fine.
Yeah. Okay, Lee, go ahead.
Speak up though.
So yeah, we're, we're proposing, it's gonna be sixty
Sixty, okay.
Sixty foot of dock. So there'll be eight sections that are uh seven and a half by ten.
So this way you're not trampling the uh with the um eel grass and all that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no grass in that area uh under the water.
Right.
There's that grass right as you approach.
Right.
Um I put in some decking down and using that as the destabilization point to start the ramp going down. That will avoid any more trampling of the grass there.
And so you talked about cross anchors on the, on the water
On the far end.
On the far end. And then this can stay in there during storms or does it need to be taken?
From what I'm told, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then, uh we would, Jaden, sorry, did you have uh Billy to see the printout of the picture?
I'd look at them right here.
Uh this was um
This one? I'm not sure if we're looking at this. I have these.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so they're here.
I don't know how you have yours printed out.
We sent hours of watercolors. I like the idea.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I've already met with Lee and we've spoken about it. I think it's a great idea. We just have to go through the process and
Sure. Like any, any water access that's available to everybody who lives in the village, I think it's fantastic.
Once it goes to harbor committee, what's the next step with that? So we can get that part, so.
That's
I'll go to harbor committee and then I'll come back to this board to um authorize the use, the license grant and whatever else is necessary to allow for the dock. I'd have to look.
Do you feel comfortable that you can uh get the neighbor next door to go along with this? It's have some kind of uh aggressive signage there that
Aggressive signage.
Skull and crossbones, don't walk on this beach.
Well, I think that's the whole reason for this correctly, to stop that because the
So this way they'll, they'll stay on the village and not in any way encroach on the other, and and that's partly because it's a a newer person bought the property in the last year and a half. So prior to the previous owner, it had been much more relaxed.
Right.
But then this way we'll have the dock and and all the, whether it's the adults or the younger children that are involved in the rowing, they'll stay in the right spot.
Gotcha. And for village residents who are gonna use this, there's gonna be no storage for village residents here.
Right, no boats.
No boats.
You bring in
Take your man.
That's it.
Take it out.
Yep, yep.
Do we know where the neighbor is in their dock application?
We, I know that the, the application has been submitted and um it hasn't gone to harbor committee yet.
Yeah, cause this, this would be a spring project. We would hope, you know, get everything done and then there's only a few days to put this system in from what I understand.
Great.
By the local pieces, so.
It's great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee, thank you.
I have a tangential question. It has nothing to do with the Are you planning to host crew races in the Cove or the harbor in a so where? I'm just wondering. And and although
At the moment, no. The one regatta that we do is in Riverhead, uh usually in November. And they're having issues getting volunteers. From what I'm told. So we would look to host something, I'm very small, because we obviously only have parking. Maybe this year, probably, but in the future, if they don't go through, I was very happy to have Riverhead do all the work. Okay, but uh that could be a potential, but nothing, the room isn't there either in the Cove or from the one side to do something on a major basis. We would have to either use York Beach or Havens if we were to do something like that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Lee.
Uh my next step is to harbor committee, we're doing apply for that.
Yeah, I don't see why you could do that.
Just submit the application to the building department.
Okay, cause I, before I actually kick, you know, I filled that one out, there's probably, you know, so.
Well
Sorry, I'll
We'll, we'll
No, you don't start it all over. I think you can just take
Seeing as it's village property, don't we have to apply for this?
Oh, that's right. We have to consent to
Consent to it.
Application going to
Is that something we, can we do that tonight or is it something that we have to put on the agenda?
Vote about this?
Uh you should. We should have a resolution authorizing his application on village property to the harbor committee, but you know, I don't have that prepared.
So we have to do it next, we have to have it on the agenda for next month, correct?
Yeah.
Um can you articulate a verbal resolution to us that you can then memorialize in writing?
Sure.
Rather than have him delay another month?
Yeah, you just do a resolve to authorize, to consent to um, I don't know what his organization's called.
Sag, Sag Harbor Committee Row.
Sag Harbor Committee Rowing Club's application.
Slow down, Kate's, Kate's raining this long hair, huh?
No, it's recorded.
It's recorded, it's recorded.
To the um harbor committee.
Okay, do I have a motion?
And you authorize the mayor to execute any mail documents for, necessary for saying.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, good luck, Lee.
Uh next harbor committee is when?
Well, you have to submit your application. Then it has to be deemed complete by the environmental planner and your, your plan might need to be updated since it doesn't have the right length dock, correct? So you have to get that in order and submit it.
Is there an environmental planner that I'm meeting with or?
No, it will be referred to them.
Refer to them, okay.
And you'll hear, you'll hear.
So the process has begun, Lee.
I will stop in the, so I need to stop in that office.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then just bring the proper drawings.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so that ends our discussion items and that brings us to action items. Resolution to appoint members to the Environmental Advisory Committee. Do I have a motion? Motion by trustee Plum, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Question about these committees, both. Who will the committees report to?
Ultimately, they will report, they will report to this, this board, yes. Yep.
All committees created by this board, report to this board.
Thank you. Okay, resolution to appoint members to the LWRP Update Advisory Committee. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second. Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Another question about both the committees. Um do the committees have a charter?
That, that was my question.
They were established, uh she left, under mayor, Kathleen, yes.
So can I ask that we, if the committee members have that charter, they bring it forward to us and if they don't, that they consider drafting one frankly for our approval? I wanna understand the scope of the committees to make sure they're not overlapping with existing committees.
I had that discussion this morning. So, so we just need the documentation.
Those are fourteen-person committees.
That's right.
It's big.
And some of those members are are members of other
Committees.
Boards.
Yeah, other appointed boards.
Or committees. And I had that discussion with a member. So yes, we need to get that in writing.
And is there, is there a formal, a formal way that reports are made to this board or how often is the
We can, I think that, yeah, could be put into the charters.
Okay.
That, you know, you know, at least quarterly, they report to the board um or is it needed?
I agree a hundred percent. That was
And do you know how often the committee meets? That's part of the charter.
That's all we, I, I'd like to see all that in the charter.
Okay, so that motion was, the action item was approved, correct?
Yes.
So now we're to authorize the village of Sag Harbor Justice to submit a grant application for financial No.
No.
No, we just did that.
Just did that, yeah, yeah. Okay, so uh resolution September twenty twenty-three to authorize the village of Sag Harbor Justice to submit a grant application for financial assistance to the state of New York Unified Court System.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Cora, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution to award the bid for two thousand four Steiger boat to the sole bidder, Michael McGrath. Have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cora, all those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you.
Posed, Michael, yes. So carried. It, it is. Uh authorization to accept twenty twenty-three bank reconciliations and collateral reports for July twenty-three. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Cora, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Lieutenant Drake requests the village to sponsor candidate Mario J. Barantes to attend the part-time police academy located at the Suffolk County Police Academy in Brentwood beginning on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Lieutenant Drake requests authorization for Sergeant Michael LaBrosi and police officer Kelly Anderson to attend Reed Technique of Investigative Interviewing and Positive Persuasion for Child Abuse Investigation in Hampton Bays, New York on October thirty-first twenty twenty-three and November second, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Cora, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee, uh excuse me, deputy mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Melissa Hessler, president of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps, requests authorization to hire Casara Brandman as an EMT paramedic at the hourly rate of thirty-seven dollars. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Richard Shavoni, Secretary of the Sag Harbor Fire Department, accepted the application of Darius Dorf Lowery as an active probationary member to the Autoho's company and requested he be added to the insurance rolls. So I have a motion. Motion by trustee Plum, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cora, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Kim Garapi of Pearson PTSA requests permission to have the annual homecoming parade on Saturday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three from eight AM to ten AM, starting on Nassau Street and continuing down Main Street to Mashaw Muir Park, also requesting to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf from September fifteenth to September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cora, so those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Joseph LaBrosi Junior requests authorization for commercial slip mooring usage of Dock B twenty-seven for the twenty twenty-three boating season. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion
Twenty-three, that's what this
That's this year, okay?
Whatever's remaining. Yeah, whatever's up, just I wanna make sure that
Submitted last year at this time and he thought it was annual from the date of, so it's just going back.
Okay.
Okay, so we have motion by trustee Cora, so second. Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Lindsay Sanchez of Bridgehampton Union Free School District requests permission to have a Halloween carnival at the Custom House, nine twelve Main Street on Sunday, October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three from eleven AM to four PM. Also requests to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf from October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Kane, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. John Landis of twenty-two Dennison Road requests to amend the date of his previous special event application for the fiftieth anniversary party from August nineteenth to October seventh, twenty twenty-three, from five PM to eleven PM.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded. Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Adam Page of the BMF Media Group LLC requests to have a guided drive from Barron's Cove proceeded over the Jordan Herda Bridge to the Bridgehampton Golf Course on Saturday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, from one PM to two thirty PM.
What's a guided?
What is that?
I believe that what, it's a procession. They're gonna have a procession of cars that are gonna go over the bridge and they're gonna head to Bridgehampton Golf Course. So we're only, they're only coming through a
It's like specialty fancy cars. They've done it last year, um
Sounds like fun.
So they don't want my Ford?
Like historic. Like antiques.
I think of all sorts, like.
Paul makes motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Cora, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. That brings us to the approval of the payment of bills. I'll take, we'll take them all in one order. We have warrant thirteen and the amount of.
That's a funny.
That is a funny number. Two million, two hundred thirty seven thousand, two hundred fifty three and eighty two cents. We have warrant fourteen in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and sixty five and thirteen cents. And warrant number fifteen in the amount of one thousand, four hundred eighty three dollars, seventy five cents. We have warrant sixteen in the amount of two thousand dollars. And warrant seventeen in the amount of two million, sixty seven thousand, fourteen dollars and three cents. Do I have a motion to take, pay all the bills?
Pay the bills. I make the most.
I'll move it.
Yeah.
I, I don't think that first one is right.
It's two thirty seven.
I think it's two thirty seven.
Yes.
About two million, it's two hundred.
Just a double on the two.
Yeah.
Two hundred and thirty seven, two hundred and fifty three dollars and eighty two cents.
Yeah.
That's in the detail.
Okay, so it's two, two hundred thousand.
Two hundred and thirty seven.
So let's amend warrant thirteen to two hundred thousand, thirty seven dollars, two hundred and fifty three dollars and eighty two cents.
Actually, no, it's two hundred and thirty seven thousand, two hundred and fifty three dollars and eighty two cents.
Yes, I agree, like you said. I like that motion.
Motion by trustee Cora to pay the warrants, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. That brings us to a fifteen minute public session. Comments, questions, three minutes per speaker. Anybody? Uh, yes, ma'am? State your name and your address, please.
I'm sorry, what was your name? I was born and raised here in Sag Harbor. My family and myself still reside here. Since two thousand eighteen, I acquired the one of its retail stores, Toria, ninety five Main Street. For the last five years, I've solely owned and operated it. I, like myself, I, like many others in the community, have come to some concern and fear around what the future of the village will look like. So I'm here to just inquire about what, any protection there is for small businesses and retailers as far as spikes and rental rates and the discretion of what businesses occupy the commercial spaces. In my current situation, there doesn't seem to be any regard for the preservation of the character or integrity of our village. And this leaves me very sad and concerned about what's to come. So basically.
What do you, what exactly do you see? What's that?
My landlord.
Yes.
Has informed me that I have to leave at the end of this year. He's taking the highest bidder for the space. No questions, no, nothing. No care about going to be going in there.
Right.
And it's just, it's upsetting. I worked in that store when I was in high school. I bought it in two thousand eighteen. I feel like it's a part of this community.
Can I ask, do you have any suggestions on what we can do to help?
I don't at the moment, but I'm just hoping to see if there's a conversation being had about this. And if there is anything that's maybe we can do about it or if it is just solely up to the property owners' discretion, what goes on in the building.
Well, there is, there, there, correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, but we do have permitted uses within, that are allowed and.
Sure, I mean, the board has, you know, power within its zoning to affect the, what, what uses are permitted in certain areas, the size perhaps of stores, but ultimately those decisions and what's applied for is from the property owner. And private property rights are still valid. So it's, it's a difficult situation, you know.
And we don't control rents, for instance.
No.
Yeah, we don't have power to control rent or to impose rent control. That's not something that's within our purview. I really feel for you. Don't get me wrong. And I wish there was something we could do here. But as long as every, the user's in compliance.
It's comparable to what we're facing, frankly, and residents, some people trying to stay here that have grown up here and aren't millionaires to afford to continue living here, both existing relevant residents as well as their children and parents. It's, I, I do think that the village has been able to help mitigate some of what's happened in the other villages through the use tables and use laws.
Square footage allowed.
But the market is pushing a lot of people out that we want in the village and that helps make the character of this village. But we do have limited tools that we're aware of at our disposal when it comes to individual property rights.
And we're always here to listen. So if there's any suggestions or, I mean, of course.
And this, you know, there, we, we are doing work on the residential side and, you know, we're we've started planning studies to reintroduce affordable housing legislation in addition to the amendments we've made to the ADU's law. If there are any suggestions that people come up with on the commercial side, we'd be willing to try to listen to that as well. But it's got to be balanced with the property owners' rights as well as ours. And there's got to be some voluntary aspect of it within the village as well, I suspect by the property owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody has their hand raised? Good.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tanyan Rosenberg, Kent Harbor. Not a comment on, on the tree preservation committee or legislation, but a quick thank you and a small request. Jane and I would like to acknowledge the board and the mayor for putting this on the agenda again. And your commitment to getting the legislation passed by, hopefully by the end of this year. We look forward to receiving and reviewing the latest iteration. We felt that the, that small group meeting, the tree preservation group meeting was, was significant and helpful. And we made some progress on some important issues, but still we feel there are some remaining serious issues that we'd like to address. So with that in mind, a small request is that we hope that we can meet again prior to the next mayor's meeting so that we can advance the legislation prior to the meeting. And we have it, you know, maybe more forms, so to speak, if that's possible.
Makes perfect sense. And Kate, can you help us schedule a follow-up meeting? Thanks.
Happy to.
Thank you. Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Cora, seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Opposed. So carried. Thank you.